Thank you.
John is logging in now.
This is Barbara Brenneman speaking. I'd like to welcome you to the Town of Farmington's Town Plan and Zoning Commission meeting of Monday, June 22. Would you please join me in a pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the states of America, which it stands, a nation indivisible, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Before we begin, we have to add an agenda item. It will become under New Business, number four. It will be a motion that needs to be made to add Colt Highway LLC, 299 Colt Highway, to determine if accessory garage use warrants a public hearing and accept application and set a public hearing for July 20, 2020, should we feel that necessary. So if everybody would please add that to your agenda as number four. We'll begin the agenda as...
We actually need a motion in a second.
To add that. May I have a motion?
Hi, this is Inez St. James. I will make the motion to add Colt Highway LLC at 299 Colt Highway to determine if accessory garage use warrants a public hearing and possibly and accept application and set public hearing for July 20, 2020.
I need a second, please.
Marcy Schwartz, I'll second.
There is a motion with a second. Does everybody know what they're voting on?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? Thank you. Now we'll go back to the beginning of New Business, Palazzo Drive subdivision, request for extension of time to file final plans.
Bob Palazzo?
Tim Fury here for Bob.
Okay. Hi, Tim.
Hi.
Hi, Tim.
Pretty straightforward. We've worked with Mark DeVoe to straighten out some issues with the open space designation. And now I think the town has the final maps to review. And once they say they're good, I have to draft a couple conservation easements for you and we'll get it all squared away over the summer. Be good to go.
Okay. Thank you. Do we have a end date for the existing? So it was going to expire the end of June?
Right on it.
I'm sorry?
I think it was July 9 was the extension.
Oh, that's it right here, from July 9 filing date and the next meeting on June 26. Thank you for clarifying.
And call on the commissioners. You have any questions about this? Patrick or Mike or Matt?
This is Inez St. James. I take direction from the town. I think this is kind of a, I don't want to say normal, but routine. I have no problem with the extension and I support what the staff recommends too.
Thank you. Anyone else have comments? Okay, thank you. As usual, during the Zoom meetings, we're going to vote on actions as we make them. So in order to fulfill our obligation here, someone needs to make a motion to extend for 90 days the application for Palazzo Drive subdivision. May I have a motion and a second, please?
This is Inez...
Yes.
Go ahead.
Patrick Carrier, I make a motion to extend for 90 days of Palazzo Drive subdivision.
Thank you. May I have a second, please?
Second, Inez St. James.
All right, there is a motion and a second to approve the extension for 90 days of Palazzo Drive subdivision. Everybody know what they're voting on?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? Motion carries. Thank you. We'll move on to... Is there a question?
No, I just want to say thank you.
Oh, okay.
Thank you, Bob.
Farmington Heritage Trail Crossing, sign application for 155 Scott Swamp Road. I believe, Marcy, you're stepping aside on that?
That is correct.
And Scott, you'll be the one sitting in on this and only this piece of business.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Scott.
Mm-hmm.
So is there someone here representing Farmington Heritage Trail Crossing?
Attorney Tim Fury here, representing this applicant as well. So the staff has submitted its comments. I assume everyone's reviewed in response to those comments. One of the first comments was the lawn sign, if you will, the new proposed lawn sign was one inch too tall. It's already been rectified. We're going to lower the sign, so that's a non-issue, so it'll be under six feet. The second was that it is in part based on the documentation we provided, located approximately a foot onto the property we've leased from the state of Connecticut, but the lease provides it to be used for landscaping purposes. We will most likely just move the sign back a foot because it's right in front of an island, so it's easier to do, or we will provide the town with documentation that the state's consented to the location of the sign in the leased area. Odds are, we'll just move the sign back, you know, the one foot to put it outside of the leased area. The second issue was on the lighting. To clarify, that it's all going to be LED lighting and it's all going to be equipped with the ability to be dimmed. And we submitted some of the documentation to the town today, certify, you know, showing that fact, but that would be true of all of the lighting proposed. We shouldn't need any, you know, exceptions, you know, under your Section L, I don't think with this plan. There, I think it's important to have the signage in this nature because those of you, you know, all of you are familiar with the area. So if people are coming from the west, from Hartford, we do have the ground sign on the corner, but that's really designed, you know, as a directional sign so people can understand what tenants are in the building and to potentially make the turn. And that sign, if we do add other tenants, is going to be, you know, the space for each tenant will be reduced and we're going to use that corner sign for the various tenants in the building acting more as a directional sign. The wall signs are important because as people are going by, we want to be able to identify and the other ground sign, we want to identify the site and to get ready to turn. We don't want people pulling U-turns on Route 6. So it is important that people be able to recognize what the building's being used for. And I think with what they've designed, with the lighting they've designed, it's very attractive. So, you know, all of us have traveled that corridor during our lives and you understand that it is important that to be sufficient signage for people to understand they need to slow down and make the appropriate turns. And that's about it. I don't know if there was any other staff comments we haven't addressed.
We can go through everybody on this one.
Commissioners, Patrick, do you have any questions? Patrick, any questions?
Sorry, no, I don't.
Thank you. Mike?
Microbulous, any questions?
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Can you hear me?
Barely.
Can I just hear the climate control sign again?
I didn't hear the question.
I'm hearing you.
You're breaking up, Mike. But we move on to Matt and I'll come back to Mike. Matt, do you have anything to discuss?
Well, I wanted to verify the dimming driver. So you have this in front of us. We're looking currently at a screen with a downlit aluminum light that is, those are the lights that are going to be used on the signs that are on the building. That's correct?
Those are the exact ones, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And it does say that it has an integral dimming driver. So if you have a light bulb in there, you're going to be able to dim these to whatever you need to, to make it acceptable so the light does not leave the property?
That's correct. And it's more than leave the property. We want to be able to make sure both the ground lighting and the building lighting doesn't cause a glare onto Route 6 to drivers.
Exactly.
So it'll give us the ability to adjust all the lighting on the site for that purpose.
Okay. So although the lights that we're looking at currently are only for the building, you're telling us right now that the same type of dimming driver will be on the uplight to the signs that are going to be along the road?
Yes.
Yes?
LED with the dimming driver.
Okay, very good. There was some concern from the planning department about the size of the sign, the detached sign. It needed to be one inch lower in order to fit in our criteria for what was acceptable. Is that, was that changed?
Yes.
Okay. I just wanted to verify that.
Yeah.
I believe the dimming and the sign are all that the major concerns were. And I just want to verify with Mark that this is all within the amount of signage that is allowed with the amount of frontage and whatnot and the size of the building that they have.
That's correct, Matt. The detached sign is just under the limit that's allowed and the attached signs are vastly under the limit that would be allowed.
Okay.
It could be much larger if they wanted them to be. Because they're small.
No, they're, I think they're tasteful. I think that is well done. So no, no other questions at this time. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Inez, do you have any questions?
No questions. I am happy with the town reviewing for placement and size and I'm okay with everything that's presented.
Scott, do you have anything to, questions?
No questions, thank you.
John Vibbert, do you have any questions?
No, I don't.
Keith Vibbert, do you have any questions?
No, thank you.
This is Barbara Brenneman speaking. I do have a question having to do with the sign being on the state right of way. Do you have a letter confirming permission?
No, as I explained at the beginning of my presentation, we have a lease for the state land. Mark noted that the lease provides, we're able to use the land for landscaping purposes. So we either need to move the sign back approximately a foot or to get permission from the state and we will do one of the two to verify that our lease will allow us to, in part, place the end of a sign in the leased area, or we'll just move the sign back a couple feet and it will be compliant.
Okay. Would you be sure to notify us of which decision was made so that we can add it to the record, please?
Absolutely.
Very good, thank you. Does anyone else have questions? Microbulus, were you able to re-log in?
No.
No. So you're going to want, yeah, if there's anything critical, you can use the chat.
Can I make you out, Mike?
Yeah. Got some feedback or something.
Sounds like you're talking underwater.
Yeah, so, okay. We're gonna, we'll move along. That's fine. All right.
At this point, we would need a motion and a second to accept the Farmington Heritage Trail Crossing sign application for 155 Scott Swamp Road. Need a motion?
Hi, it's Inez St. James. Sorry, I was on mute. I make the motion to accept the sign application from Farmington Heritage Trail Crossing as presented.
May I have a second, please?
Scott also has a second.
There is a motion to approve and a second that we'll vote on. Does everyone understand what we're voting on?
Yes.
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? Thank you, motion's approved. Move on to number...
Have a great night.
You too.
Thank you. Move on to number three, which is Michael Quas, a second application for special permit for amateur radio tower not more than 65 feet in height at 124 Mountain Road, R-80 Zone, and schedule a public hearing with a recommended date of July 6, 2020. May I have a motion, please?
It's Inez St. James. I make the motion to accept that application from Michael Quas for special permit for amateur radio tower not more than 65 feet in height at 124 Mountain Road, R-80 Zone, and schedule public hearing, recommended hearing date of July 6, 2020.
Thank you. I need a second, please.
This is Marcy.
Patrick Carrier, my second.
Thank you. Does everyone understand what we're voting on?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. We'll move on to number four, which was the addition to the agenda. And it is for 299 Colt Highway for addition of four garages, is that right?
Four garages. So there's one, two, three, four garages. And I believe, Ben Tripp, are you on the phone?
I am, yes, I'm here.
Okay, thanks, Ben. So really, this isn't a full presentation this evening, so Ben's here if there's a question from the commission. But the purpose really is more administrative and the commission making a determination as to whether or not this requires a public hearing. This is an existing apartment complex off of Route 6. It's the apartments behind the Hampton Inn and Suites. So here's the Hampton Inn and Suites, the traffic signal, the apartment complex. There's a garage here and three garages proposed along this edge. So technically, it is an additional use listed in the RDM zone. And because it's a separate use as an accessory structure, the decision with to whether or not a public hearing is warranted rests with the commission. So if you feel a public hearing is warranted, then you'll accept the application and we will set a public hearing date. If you feel it's a level of site plan review only, so you still will see it as an application, but it'll be site plan review and not a public hearing that will take place at the first meeting in July, allowing the application to finish with inland wetlands at our first meeting in July. So really, the only decision before you is whether or not you feel a public hearing is warranted so we can get this on the right track. Your commission has dealt with something similar to this back in early 2019. We had the same thing happen with the five corners application. It was originally approved for retail and restaurant. Attorney Reeve came and spoke to you and added in medical office and general office as allowed uses to expand the special permit uses. And at that particular point and for that instance, the commission felt that a public hearing wasn't warranted and moved ahead with it. So this is a request that has been before the commission before in a similar instance. Ben is on if there's questions. I can answer questions as well.
We'll start with Patrick. Do you have any questions?
No, not at this time.
Microbulus?
Not at this time.
Matt Pogson?
My question would be, what is the usage of these garages? Are they for the use of the people that are living there or for storage of materials and other things?
No, they would be exclusively for the use of tenants of the community. We currently consistently are oversubscribed for the existing in-building garage units. So these would just provide an additional method for existing tenants to be able to store their vehicle as well as small personal items.
Okay. Are these enclosed or are they open, like a carport garage?
They're enclosed, so they'll be...
Okay. Is this coverage going to extend beyond what's allowable or is this just using? I see that it's using existing parking, but is it going to create more impervious coverage?
It will create slightly more impervious. So the garages are just slightly deeper than a typical parking space. So if you line up the end of the garage with the parking space maintaining the travelway, the back of the garage extends an additional couple of feet, I believe, into the landscaped areas behind the garage.
Okay. So it's not going to push us over to like a 50, 60% or something, it's just a little small change?
Correct.
Correct.
Very good. Um, no, other than that, I don't believe I have any questions. Thank you very much.
Inez?
No, Matt handled it. Thank you.
Marcy?
Not at this time. Thank you, Bob.
Scott?
No questions, thank you.
John Vibbert?
No questions.
Keith Vibbert?
No questions, thank you.
So now the question is, our opinion and how we want a motion to be verbalized to either consider this not needing a public hearing or does it need a public hearing?
Correct. Not significant and no public hearing or significant and a public hearing. And again, either way, it still comes back before you, so you'll have a full site plan presentation either way, once we finish at inland wetlands.
Madam Chair, this is Matt Pogson.
Yes.
I'd be willing to, I'd be willing to take a stab at making a motion for that, if you'd like.
Go right ahead.
I make a motion to consider this a non-significant application that does not require a public hearing on the basis that it falls within the general, the already established general use of this property and is not being used for anything outside of what's already existing.
That's the motion?
Second, Inez St. James.
All right, there is a motion and a second. Is there comment on the motion? Anyone?
I'm good with it.
Everyone understand what we're going to be voting on?
Yes.
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll move now on to public hearings. Joanna Robulski, application for special permit to raise 11 hens at 35 Town Mountain, Tane Mountain Road in the Arthurs though. It's continued from June 8, 2020. Is Joanna here?
Yes, I'm here.
Would you make a presentation for us, please?
Oh, sure. So I would like to apply for the permit to have, you know, the 11 hens just to, as a great hobby, great pets and very educational for our children. And of course, you know, fresh eggs and we like to, you know, recycle everything and I will use the compost for the garden, so, and we have a big yard, big, big space there and then not in anybody's, nobody can pretty much see them. The only closest one that could possibly even see the chickens would be the neighbor on 33 Tane Mountain Road. I spoke to her personally and everyone is in agreement.
Did all your notifications come back?
Yes. Oh, I, yeah.
Patrick?
Yeah, no, no questions.
Microbulus?
No questions.
Matt Pogson?
No questions.
Inez St. James? Did I lose Inez?
I'm having a conversation of my own here.
Sorry.
The dog was barking before, so I decided to go on mute and I remain on mute.
No problem, understand.
So I was just wondering what this coop looks like. Is it enclosed or can you explain it or describe it to us?
Oh, yes. So the coop size is four feet by eight and then it has an enclosure so the chickens can go under for the shade and then the enclosure extends. So it's altogether, it's about four feet by 12 feet, so they have plenty of room to walk around and...
Okay. So it's covered though, it's enclosed?
Yes, it is.
Okay. That's it, thank you.
Thank you.
Marcy?
I don't think I have any que... I'm just curious, is there any way, are you concerned about other animals sort of jumping in there and hurting, so coyote or anything like that?
Oh, yes, I know. Yes, yes. Of course. So, I mean, it's a metal, how do you call it, you know, like the fencing? So I'm hoping that nothing will get in. And actually, I'm ordering like, I don't know, something to scare the animals just in case if they get too close, just in case. But I mean, I talked to other people who raise chickens and I don't know, it seems like it's enough.
All right. Good luck with it.
Thank you, thank you. I hope nothing gets in. I mean, we do have bears and I, quite honestly, I'm not sure what can, I hope they're not interested in chickens because they are a pretty good size.
Scott, do you have any questions?
No questions.
John?
Have any of the neighbors offered any opposition to this?
No.
Not that we're aware of.
Thank you.
Keith?
No questions, thank you.
This also is a public hearing. If there's anyone who has signed on to this meeting that would like to speak, either in favor or in opposition to this application, please come forward. That's Metro, all right. So there's no one? Hearing none, I will close this public hearing. I would like to have a motion on this application, please, with a second.
This is Matt Pogson. And before I make my motion, I have to ask a question to Mark, if you don't mind. We discussed recently...
In this case, Matt, I'm going to say yes.
Motion's already been made and seconded.
No, no, it hasn't. No. So in this case, Matt, I'll say yes, because the use itself has the ability like an earth excavation permit to change over time. And if it does change, then it would warrant additional considerations. So I think in this case, you're safe.
Okay. Then I make a motion to accept this application as presented with no roosters and 11 hens and that the applicant will come back one year from the approval to verify that everything's been going appropriately with the neighbors, et cetera.
Inez St. James, second. Yes.
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Metro Realty Group Limited, application for text amendment to the special innovation floating zone. This is continued from June 8th, 2020.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the commission. My name is Christian Helwitt and my office is located at 315 Main Street. With us this evening are the principals of Metro Realty, Jeff Sager and Peter Dunn. Also joining us from Metro is Kyle Richards. And presenting will be attorney Timothy Hollister and Lily Reckel is also here from the firm. I should state for the record, we've complied with all notice requirements. And let me begin by just resummarizing what you've already stated before you is a proposed text amendment to the special innovation floating zone. And I just want to give you a little background. We were, you opened the hearing several weeks ago, two weeks ago, and during that time, we really rolled up our sleeves and worked incredibly hard with staff. But I want to give you a little piece of background. Metro originally met with staff some time ago to discuss the possibility of a multifamily residential within the zone, within that zone. And it's just to talk conceptual. And staff did a pretty substantial deep dive on the regulation and met with Metro extensively and requested Metro assist in improving the special innovation zone. And so Metro retained attorney Hollister, who's the preeminent land use attorney and his firm. And needless to say, there was a tremendous amount of work going into the proposed amendment that you're hearing this evening. I can characterize that as really amicable. There was at no time any kind of serious pushback. It was an intellect. From that, I think amended regulation, which I think is improved for the applicant and for all parties to know looking forward in the zone and for staff and the town. So a lot of work went into it, as I mentioned. I would be remiss if I didn't thank Mr. Devoe, Mrs. Rutherford and Ms. Mashad. Poor Sandy hears from me way too much and staff has shit the truth. And they've been really incredibly hardworking, as has our own team. So I just want two more minutes of your time. And I want to say a couple really general things that I hope you'll carry through the rest of the presentation. At the core of this text amendment is the word innovation. And I think that makes this really kind of exciting from the commission's perspective and from the applicant's perspective, and I think for the community as well. And I'm going to submit something to you, which is innovation has been kind of the hallmark of this commission in this whole corridor, which has reflect, been reflected by a financial and societal, you know, boom over there. And it's very attractive and it's updated and we are, at this point, probably the envy of almost every town in the state. And that's a result of innovation. And sometimes these aren't easy decisions and sometime, and this has been going on for a while and it's evolved. But from your hard work and from the staff's hard work, this has evolved and it's really an incredible thing. And I think a supplement to that now would be housing. And I think attorney Hollister will speak to more about that. And of course, the rest of the Metro team is here to talk to you if it can answer any questions you have. There are two little, there are two concepts that I just want to mention, it'll take a little amount of time, as you hear from attorney Hollister. One is throughout this, you will have and retain your broad legislative discretion on any application going forward. So there's no fear that you don't have complete control over what happens in the innovation zone. You're really in a strong position with that language in this regulation. And the other note or another concept I wanted to mention is by providing maximum standard for the development, the revised amendment is actually more restrictive than the existing regulation. So we come out of the process collaborating with the town. We think we've got a really good amendment to the regulation. And so those were just two things I wanted to kind of emphasize as you go through hearing this process. So I'm going to turn it over to attorney Hollister, who I think is there.
He's here.
Okay. So if you don't mind, attorney Hollister, I'm going to turn it over to you, Tim, and then of course, we'll answer any questions the commission has, anyone from the public, and then kind of double back. So thank you so much.
Good evening, commissioners. I'm attorney Tim Hollister from Hartford. And at the outset, let me assure you that in this presentation, we will not be counting any unhatched chickens. And Shannon, that was your cue to, if you would put up our slides, please.
So the slides, I'm going to minimize the video portion since your slide's taking the full screen. And then just let me know, Tim, as you want to move through.
You can go right to slide number two.
Okay. Which I believe should be showing on your screen right now.
No, we still have the chickens.
Yeah.
No, I've got, you know what? You okay?
Yeah. We may have to, okay, so what you wanted to, hang on.
Escape out of here.
We can reduce this and go to the PDF. I put the PDF up here as well.
No, you didn't open the PDF.
I did.
So I don't have the PDF.
It's in there. You just have to go to the file, the open file at the bottom and open it to the right.
Here, you drive it.
Okay. Sorry about that. I thought that.
Sorry, we are looking at a PowerPoint presentation and so it was, it was showing up as a PowerPoint. Does it show now, Torio?
Yep. And if you can just go to the second slide, I'll start there.
Okay. There we go. Sorry about that.
It's okay. Thank you. So commissioners, my involvement here tonight traces back to working with the commission and staff back in 2010 to draft the medical office campus zone regulations, which pulled together a, you know, a nascent, abutting medical office area into a campus with coordinated circulation, parking, signage, lighting, landscaping, et cetera. And obviously, that zone has been very successful since then. There've been quite a number of zone changes to MOC. And I've been before you several times since 2010 assisting with rezonings, special permits, and site plans for medical office buildings, both within the campus and along Farmington Avenue. So as Chris Ho have alluded to, tonight's regulation amendment is very much a continuation of and an effort to build upon the very successful process for the Yukon Health Center area that this commission has shaped and guided since 2010. Now, the more recent and relevant background that leads up specifically to tonight's regulation begins in 2014. At that point, the medical office core of the area had really developed and that led to the discussion and examination of the land use planning question. Does the medical office core as a core use need other supporting uses in order to solidify the success? And that led to the commission receiving what was called the Yukon Health Center Neighborhood Planning Study. And Shannon, if you can go to slide three. The specific recommendation, which was done by a private firm, was to solidify the medical office campus as a quote, "live, work, play" unquote area, meaning not just office, but also mixed use, retail, multifamily residential as uses supporting the core use in the zone medical office. Shannon, if you could then switch to, go ahead to number four and then number five. Number four illustrates the, what we call the I-84 corporate office area. And I'll explain when we look at the text of the regulation why that's incorporated in there. But Shannon, if you'll go to number five, thank you. So in 2017 and 2018, this commission adopted a supplement to the plan of conservation and development and adopted, among other things, this specific recommendation that's on the screen, which I'll just read aloud, "to create a 24-hour community where people can live, work, and play without a car, but is clearly lacking is a supply of modern, high-tech, highly efficient, small rental apartments. Opportunities exist and the commission will proactively, will act proactively to address the need," unquote. And the further recommendation at that time was to do so through the mechanism of a, what's called a floating zone, which is a zoning regulation that establishes standards and rules for particular uses and defines eligible locations, eligible locations, but is not yet applied to any particular parcel of land. In the language of zoning, the zone floats until such time as the commission lands it, meaning officially rezones a specific parcel or parcels. So the special innovation floating zone regulation was adopted in late 2017. But, and this is why we're here tonight, it was what might be called a broad strokes regulation, basic procedure, a basic recitation of the uses that are allowed, several standards and dimensions, but overall, the greater specificity to guide the development within the zone was left for another day and that other day is today. Now, just to pick up on, on some things that attorney Hoeb said, here, there's a couple key features of this draft text amendment that I want to highlight. The first, as Chris said, is this is, we can, we can say a consensus document developed with the commissions, with the commission staff over the past several months. And I want to echo my thanks to the staff for their, their hard work and insight. And I will tell you, they are, and I mean this in the most charitable sense, they are a bunch of tough customers who look out for your interests. We had some real back and forth, but what came out of it was not only the consensus, but just really a very well-drafted regulation. Number two is, as I just alluded to, this is still a floating zone. The commission will not, by adopting this regulation, be rezoning any specific parcels. It's going to retain its full legislative discretion as to where the floating zone may land and the details of any future development. Number three is that the amendment better implements the 2018 Plan of Conservation and Development Supplement by providing definitions, standards, and, as Chris alluded to, limitations on the uses that the floating zone allows, starting with a better definition of where exactly the innovation zone may land. Now, as a side note, it's very important to understand a property owner within this eligible, the eligible floating zone areas could proceed with the existing regulation, the one that's on your, on your books today. But if that occurred, the development simply would not be guided in its details the way it will if we, if this amendment is adopted. It would be a much more difficult process for everyone involved. So this amendment makes the future consideration of plans for development easier to review and administer. And finally, and most importantly, and Chris alluded to this also, the proposed text, I want you to think about it as filling in the blanks of the Yukon Health Center area by providing flexibility and in specifically inviting innovation and layout, innovation in layout and design, recognizing that this is a already developed and highly successful area and what we need to do is plan to support the core use that already exists. So in a very real sense, when we use the term innovation here, we're not just talking about innovation in medical science within the office buildings, but also innovation in planning, development, and construction that will support the continued success of the area. Shannon, if we could go to number six, please. Now commissioners, you should have from my office a, let's see, it's a 10-page document that is presented in two columns. At the top, it says, "Special Innovation Floating Zone, new, June 2020." Left column is the text of the proposed amendment and the right-hand column is an effort to explain the derivation, the justification of each of the sections. And I'm not going to take the time to walk through the 10 pages in detail, but I'll just comment on a few, a few key portions. Sections A and B, purpose and applicability, this is one we worked on hard with the staff. This aligns the floating zone better than the previous iteration of it with the 2018 Plan of Conservation and Development Supplement. Yukon Health Center area and the I-84 corporate zone, which is Zone PR, that's where the floating zone can land. Then we, Shannon, if you'll move on to slide seven, please. The sections called Establishment and Procedure are basically unchanged from the previous regulation. And then we move into section E, which is pretty standard, talks about accessory uses and preserving non-conforming uses. So then we get into the, where the real core, what's before you, which is sections F, G, and H. Section, section F states the uses that are allowed by zone change and site plan review throughout the floating zone area. Mixed use, retail, commercial, with a notation that there are maybe some parcels that are not suitable for mixed use because of lack of street frontage and office. Then in section F, we have, I'm sorry, I think I may have misnumbered here. F is the allowed uses. G is the requirements applicable to all of the allowed uses. Long list of, we said we were providing definitions, standards, and limitations. Minimum lot area, building height, building clusters and separations, yard, side yards and rear and side yards, buffers, landscaping, setbacks, parking, accessibility, sidewalks, impervious coverage, lighting, recycling, utility infrastructure, and phasing. Very little, if any, of those were addressed in the previous regulation. So this is why we say we're approving it and we're providing limitations. Key point, which is illustrated in the, in the second column of the two-column document that we've provided to you, is that each one of these sections has either a precedent or an analog in other parts of the town's existing zoning regulations. So this amendment, to some degree, mixes and matches among zones, but it follows, it does not disregard standards in other zones. And then section H is some particular standards for multifamily, either as a mixed use or standalone, focusing on maximum density, minimum unit size, and parking. And then finally, sections I, J, and K refer to standards contained elsewhere in the zoning regulations for office, retail, and commercial. And this structure has two purposes. The first is to make sure that there are standards in the special innovation zone, but also to invite any property owner in the future who wants to pursue these particular uses to invoke the flexibility and innovation that is the purpose of this zone in the first place. So at this point, I'm not going to, obviously, we'll So at this point, I'm not going to, obviously, we'll answer any questions you may have, but I'm not going to go into more detail of the text of the regulation, again, somewhat relying on the fact that staff and our team did work this over in great detail over an extended period. So in conclusion, Madam Chair and Commissioners, the goal of this amendment to an existing regulation is to implement the live, work, play formula for the area of the Yukon Health Center and to provide for mixed uses and innovative design and layout as directed by the 2018 Plan of Conservation and Development Supplement. So we think this is a, very much an improvement, a good guide for the future, and, but at the end of the day, you're not giving up any of your legislative discretion to deal with future uses. So I will stop there. Thank you for letting me ramble on. And Chris, if you have anything to finish up with, turn it back to you. Chris, I think you're muted.
So, no, I think, I think that if the commission is prepared to inquire, I think that this is probably a good time, or anyone from the audience.
All right, let's start with the commissioners. Patrick?
No questions.
Mike from Lewis?
I spent a lot of time going over this and relating it to some of the other recent text amendments we've made in different various zones. It seems very well put together and does relate a lot to those other zones that we have. One thing I did notice is in the, in the letters of support, I know we're not here for a site plan or anything, but it sure seemed like there was, there was a plan in the background already for particular parcels of land that were referenced up off of Quarry Road, and I wondered if there was any, if anybody could speak to that.
Chris, you want to take that, or you want me to do it?
You go ahead.
No, Commissioner, you're right. You know, Metro is a developer of a lot of different parcels, and they have an interest in the Quarry Road parcel, but our agreement with staff going back as far as five months ago was that the right way to do this was to approach the, the text of the regulation first and standalone. We, you know, we could have looked at coming in with a more consolidated application, but I think the, that's why we tried to emphasize that if this text amendment is proposed, there will be a future phase in which we will look at landing the zone, which will be in your discretion, and shaping, you know, any particular development proposal. So, but no, it's, we're not at the stage of being able to present something.
Okay. You know, I was just out of curiosity, because I'm all for the, doing the text amendments first and then, and then coming before us. I was just curious because the, I believe, I don't remember which company wrote the letter of a recommendation of support, but I was just curious. That's all. Other than that, I have no questions.
Matt, do you have questions?
Yes. I was trying to find a map of the, I know it's a floating zone, but what is encompassed in the floating zone currently? Do we have that available to us? Because I could not find reference to that online or in my zoning manual. There you go. So currently, that is where it stands, or is that what it's hoped to be? Or could you explain that a bit to us?
Sure. This is Tim Hollister. So in the existing, I'm not sure what article, it's section 31, the existing special innovation floating zone, there's reference to the Yukon Health Center Neighborhood and then otherwise the professional office zone. And so one of the main purposes of this text amendment is to define the two eligible areas. The first is, is what's on your screen outlined in yellow, which is what's referred to as the Yukon Health Center area. And then Shannon, if we go to the next slide, the, the Plan of Conservation and Development Supplement refers to the I-84 corporate office area. Now, I would tell you, we debated as recently as last week whether there was any reason at this time to, to go street by street, parcel by parcel in that area and define the boundaries where the special innovation zone could land, but that seemed to be getting ahead of ourselves. And also Shannon and Mark pointed out that doing that would not be really consistent, would not be consistent with the plan of conservation and development, which identified this as an area. So, so the, the special innovation zone can land in the health center and in this corporate office area, but any further definition of that would wait until an application to actually land the floating zone. So you have, you have what I'll say, what I'll call geographic parameters, but not, not to the level of, you know, streets, parcels, or anything more.
Okay. The yellow outline in the previous slide dictates an area that would fall under what the regulations that you're proposing would consider usable land? Is that correct?
Yes. Within the yellow outlines, the land is eligible at the commission's discretion to be rezoned under the special innovation zone, if I'm understanding.
Is it currently eligible, or is it eligible after this modification is made?
Well, that's what I, what I was just saying. The text, yeah, the text from 2017, 2018 was a little bit imprecise. It just, it just refers to the Yukon Health Center Neighborhood as identified in the Plan of Conservation and Development or in the professional office zone, which could be, you know, there are professional office zones in many different areas of town. So in that sense, staff pointed out to us that the existing regulation really does not follow the 2018 Plan of Conservation Development Supplement. So Shannon and Mark, if you want to.
Can I? Yeah, I'm happy. Can I, can I just jump in real quick?
Yeah, sure, sure.
Thank you.
So, the, the current regulation says Yukon Health Center Neighborhood as identified by chapter seven of the P O C D, which is what is showing here on the screen, and it matches the P O C D. So there has been no change with this area designation between existing and proposed regulation.
Thank you, Shannon.
The change with the area only comes with the professional office zone. The current regulation says simply, "or in professional office zone." The way it's written, this could be implemented in any professional, any land that's currently zoned, professional office in the town of Farmington. The P O C D, it didn't, it didn't use the same, the zone, the zoning regulation did not use the same wording as the P O C D. The P O C D says the I-84 corporate office area, including the U T C campus. So since this application was being put forth, staff requested that that wording be changed to match the P O C D, so that we didn't have folks trying to be opportunistic and try to implement a special innovation zone in the middle of Route Four, where we have a professional office center, but that's really not where the special innovation zone was really truly envisioned. It was envisioned for this area and the, oops, sorry, Patterson Park area, and this is the U T, so this is Farm Springs Road and the U T C corporate area. So we took the opportunity to better define this, so we didn't end up in trouble down the road.
Thank you. That clarifies it very much. Does the existing language allow for the R-80 zone that is in that last picture? Could we go to the yellow outline again? The, there you go. The R-80 section that is in the middle to the left, that kind of juts out in those, does it incorporate that R-80 zone at this point? Does it, does it?
I guess it does. So that's consistent.
It does.
Yep, it's consistent with the graphics that's in the P O C D and how the P O C D was worded.
Thank you. I was having a tough time. I don't know why, I just didn't find it, but I appreciate the clarification. Thank you.
No, so the Yukon Health Center area is map seven dash four in the P O C D, and this graphic that's before you matches that. I actually have, I brought it down with me, I've got them both open, so.
Thank you.
It matches.
So moving on from that question, I do have a question as to why you've requested to have the Architectural and Design Review Committee removed from the, well, review from reviewing your designs, basically.
That was a staff suggestion, Matt, and that came at my request. A D R C is not authorized legislatively or otherwise to review plans outside of their statutory authority, which under eight dash thirteen, I, I believe, Tim, you would, you would know, for the, for the Farmington Center and the Unionville Center zones, in other words, it would be outside of their jurisdiction.
When we changed, when we had changed it to be the Farmington Architectural and Design Review Committee, I thought we had taken that constraint off of it to allow it to give its input on other areas. But I guess, I think that that, that's a state statute though, isn't it, Mark?
It is. So the state statutes do permit towns and cities to have architectural design review boards, but their applications are limited to those for, what's the term I'm looking for? Village districts.
Okay.
So Farmington Center and Unionville Center are both duly adopted village districts under eight dash thirteen, I believe it's I, could be H, of the general statutes. And so that, that's legally the only valid jurisdiction the A D R C has to, is permitted to act within.
Interestingly enough, I, I was fairly certain that that's how it was, but in recent years, we hadn't been following that necessarily every time. So I was kind of, kind of curious about why that had been changed, and that is a good clarification for me. So I appreciate that, that, that answers my question fully. And it is, like I said, I believe, I thought it was a general statute, but we had been using it more broadly. Besides that, my last question for right now, I mean, there are some changes about sizes, coverage, areas that, maximum allowable limit, et cetera. There's a lot of different things that are in there that are small nuances, but seem to be catering to a specific design or specific thought in mind. So I guess my big question and the overarching, maybe elephant in the room even, is why are we doing this? What are you looking to gain from making these changes? And I'll ask anybody from the Metro team to answer that question, but I'd like to know why we need to make these changes to make whatever it is you're trying to make fit in here.
This is Tim Hollister, and I'll start. I'm not going to speak for staff, but I think they would agree that when we looked at the existing regulation, section 31, it was, as I said in my opening remarks, you know, not really bare bones, but, you know, a very basic regulation with not a lot of definition. And it could have been, it could, it could be today used to go directly to a development plan, but then everybody would be sort of feeling their way in the dark for lack of standards, definitions, and limitations. So the, the purpose of this two-column document that we prepared is to show you that, A, when we tried to fill out the existing regulation, number one is, we started with all the subject matters that we wanted to make sure were in the regulation, because they're in any good regulation, and those are in section G. And then we wanted to make sure that anything that we're proposing for a specific dimension or bulk had some precedent or analog in some other section of the zoning regulations, or we weren't creating some, something new that might create a, you know, an unwanted precedent in the town. So really, that was kind of the limit of, you know, you end up with something that looks specific, but really, all this is, all this is, is an attempt to make sure that we covered all the bases that would be covered in a, in a thorough land use regulation and that we were not out of line by creating some standard that was inconsistent with other portions of the regulation. So I'll stop there, and Shannon and Mark, if you can correct anything I just said that doesn't fit with your recollection.
No, I'd, I'd agree. What we've found is we've had a number of folks come in to take a look and ask questions about the special innovation zone and a variety of properties, more in the Yukon Health Center Neighborhood than in the I-84 corridor. And you'll realize that there's a page and a half of existing text versus, I think, we're at four, four to five pages now. And in the absence, so this was a product of a vision that Bill Warner enacted with the commission at the time. And Bill had a very specific vision in mind and was very astute at directing that vision. In the absence of having Bill here, obviously, we've had changes staff, and that's going to happen for a variety of reasons, we're left with a zoning regulation that is very difficult to implement, and it's very difficult to guide applicants as to what can and can't be done, the density, what we're really looking for. And I wasn't part of the discussions when Bill was crafting this, the current, you know, current staff wasn't part of those. Rose Ponte thankfully was, so Rose had sat in in a number of those meetings and has been helpful in discussions with commercial developers that have been coming in. But this was going to be problematic long-term, and it's, from a multiple standpoint, that it's difficult from a staff level to guide a developer. It's difficult for a developer to look at this and understand truly what the commission is looking for. And obviously, there's a lot of time, money, and heart that goes into putting, you know, before an application even gets to you. And it was going to be really difficult for the commission. So while you had broad legislative direction with respect to whether or not you wanted to approve or not approve a particular application, the text really wasn't giving you a lot of guidance as it was written. You didn't have any parameters. It was going to be a very laborious task that this current regulation is going to help pare, pare down, you know, the funnel a little bit to try to get some parameters and while still leaving things more flexible to allow for more innovative ideas than perhaps we would in, in higher density of things than perhaps we would in other areas, understanding the uniqueness of the Yukon Health Center Neighborhood and the I-84 corridor. So, you know, that's, that's kind of the why. And yes, Metro is initiating it, but it is certainly because, not only have we spoken to Metro, we've spoken to a number of developers in the last two, two and a half years, and we've all, like, we can't get our heads wrapped around how to get something put forth that we can all say, yeah, okay, this is in the general direction that we know we want this to go and be able to put something before you that we feel relatively confident that you can comprehend and compare to a code and actually act on. So that's, that's where that's coming.
So some of the, the things that I'm looking at specifically that concern me that are a little different and new are, for instance, the impervious coverage is now being pushed up to like 75% for the mixed use.
Correct.
And, you know, in the town of Farmington, we used to have a 40% coverage rule where 50% was a five, six vote, and now, the last time that Metro came in, they asked if they could have, I forget exactly what the percentage was, it was 60% or something, but if it was, if they were able to use a different piece of property that wasn't maybe even developable, they could use that as their impervious coverage. So that's now part of this floating zone. Am I correct in saying that?
Um, no. So yes, you're, you're, we've mixed things. So you're correct. The MO. So, you're correct, the M O R, no, that's okay. The M O R F zone was, I believe the wording is fifty percent, hang on, I don't have to guess.
Fifty percent per site, sixty percent campus-wide, I believe.
Fifty percent cumulatively for all land and sixty-five percent per development. So, so, but that's, so, yes, there, there are other land, M O C zone, could, it would have to, it would have to be part of a zone change that you approved. So, yes, you're, you're right that that building that was approved under M O R F and is hitting the sixty-five percent per site, fifty for the M O R F zone, it would only be able to go to the seventy-five percent if your commission, the T P Z commission, I gotta take a look here.
Up to sixty-five percent with a five.
No, I just wanted to make sure, it actually is in that, in that area. Your commission would have to approve a zone change out of M O R F into special innovation and, and then look at it under the parameters of all the special innovation requirements that have been put in place to see, and so, it's a whole new zone change, and the applicant would have to ensure that the rest of their, the properties that are in M O R F, because it's a cumulative coverage for the M O R F zone, that by taking this one property out of M O R F, moving it to special innovation, doesn't create another issue for the other M O R F properties, right? So, there's a lot of math then that goes into it. But it's a whole new site, zone change and site plan, that, again, because it's a zone change, there's no checkbox of things necessarily that they, if they hit all the checkboxes, you're kind of obligated to approve it. That's not the case when we've got a zone change in front of you. You have to, you have to like what's being put in front of you, and it has to, has to make sense for the particular area. These dimensional guidelines that are being added in are just that, so that we have some parameters to work with and some, because as it's written, quite honestly, Matt, there's nothing prohibiting anybody from coming in with something with a hundred percent coverage.
Right.
The way it's written, somebody could come in with pavement and building, property line to property line, and there's nothing here that's preventing them to do that. There's no landscaping, you know, metrics. There's no sidewalk metrics. So, somebody could come in, now granted, it would be foolish, it wouldn't be approved, but.
But they could do it.
They can do it, the way this is written. There's zero parameters in place.
Shannon, it's Jeff Sager. Can I make a quick remark?
Absolutely.
So, with respect to the application that we contemplated that set this all in motion, the coverage for that is probably just less than fifty percent. So, we're nowhere near that max on the particular application that we were moving forward with when we started this discussion.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sager. The, I guess I actually had flipped my page in my zoning book. I was looking at fifty percent coverage, but that was in the Morph Zone, and obviously, that's even outdated now because of the fact that we made that other change. Do we have any other zones in the town of Farmington that are at seventy-five percent?
So, you're, the Unionville Center and Farmington Center, I want to say, are at eighty percent. Tim, I know, do you?
Yeah, I've got it. This is, this is Kyle Richards from Metro. At the Unionville Center, I believe, goes up to eighty-five percent. I'm pulling out right now. Yeah, Unionville Center is eighty-five percent. The Farmington Center zone actually can go up to a hundred percent, I believe, with a five, six vote. So, those were the, those were the two exceptions in terms of the, really, the highest impervious in town.
Thank you, Kyle. It's kind of sad to hear, to be honest. But besides that, at this time, I guess there are no other questions. My concerns are about coverage, but we can talk about all of that later. As of right now, I have no further questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Inez?
Thank you. So, my, you know, I read everything, I read the original documentation, the amendment, and I'm still a little struggling with the what. What is it that you want to do that you can't do today?
Well, this is Tim Hollister. We want an approval process where, as Shannon was just explaining, we can go in knowing what the commission would like to see in terms of limitations and standards, so that we don't have to sort of, you know, poke in the dark and try to figure that out. We want, we, so basically, we're trying to define a path forward for everything, you know, consistent with the plan of conservation and development, for everything within the Yukon Health Center and the corporate, eighty-four corporate zone, by putting, by taking these standards that already exist in your regulations and bringing them together in a floating zone. I know this has been said now a few times, but I'll, I'll repeat it, you know, this is still a floating zone. No one's committing to any particular standard on a particular parcel. We're trying to essentially set up an administrative process for a geographic area that will enable development plans to be brought forth in the future with much less guesswork than under the current regulation. So, what we could do is, we can have a better process next time around.
I, to me, that's a why, you know, you know what I mean, not the what. It sounded like there may be a project that's, will be coming. So, we will, is the process gonna, I guess Shannon and Mark, be the same? Does it have to be individual project will come in front of us, there'll be a public hearing, approval?
Correct. And, you know, what I, I hear you, I hear what you're asking, and I know that, I don't, I don't think it's been answered clearly. Metro, as well as other developers that have come to this department seeking clarification on this zone, either have existing holdings or have an interest in purchasing holdings within this area. But to date, we have not received an application formally, and therefore, there is no specific proposal pending. My understanding and my guess is that, that the applicant is thinking along the lines of something that we'll see in the future, that you will see in the future. I think that's a fair and clear answer.
Thank you, Mark. Yeah, I mean, you know, I take my job, obviously, seriously, being voted in by the town, and I think it's human nature that people don't react until the project starts, right? When you're driving by, trees, trees are being cut, and that's when things come up. So, okay, I do not have any other questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Inez. Marcy?
All right. I wanted to unmute. I, I sort of agree with Inez, but I'm, I'm new, and I'm, I am a little bit confused about what all this is. I think the one thing that just sort of jumped out at me is in section C, under Establishment, that says it removes any language that the commission may attach to any conditions to the approval, as no conditions may be attached to a zone change or site plan. So, that kind of confuses me a little bit, and I'm, you know, other than that, I think I'm grappling with exactly what we're doing this, so.
The regulations require that when a zone change is submitted, that it come, that a site plan be submitted in tandem. Your ultimate power rests with the fact that you have pure legislative control over whether or not you want to grant a zone change. And what that means, Marcy, is that if you take a site plan that doesn't require a zone change, and it meets all of your requirements, you are, you are nearly compelled by law to approve that if it meets the requirements of your regulations.
Correct.
When you couple that with a zone change, you have legislative discretion, not administrative, but a legislative discretion to deny the zone change if you don't like what it comes with. So, if you don't like the site plan, you have the discretion to deny the zone change before it even gets off the ground. And this is the strong legislative permit process that many towns use in floating zones to get what they want. And quite frankly, the P O C D that's calling for live, work, play is, I think, better represented with this particular amendment than what sits before you now on the books.
Okay.
Just to call it what it is. It is a bare bones regulation.
Yeah.
And to rephrase what we've discussed with staff and the applicant, there's been a lot of meat added to it. And while some of the meat may be questionable, I know Matt was talking about the coverage, it's ultimately much better and clearer than what was there to begin with, and provides a template for, for landowner and the town to better review and to, to get anything off the ground, to better review the plans.
Yeah. And this is Tim Hollister. Let me just add, why you can't condition, add conditions to a zone change. A zone change is a policy decision, and when any zoning commission, not just Farmington, any zoning commission rezones land. You cannot, as part of that process, impose a particular condition. We'll rezone you to R eighty, but we need a six-foot-high fence in your front yard. That, that's not allowed by, by statute and case law. So, that, the change that you referred to was just standard land use law in Connecticut that's nothing out of the ordinary. And, and, you know, attaching conditions to a zone, a site plan is just a matter of how you do it. It's not a blanket power that any zoning commission has. So, I will say, I, we totally understand somewhat the frustration of evaluating a regulation when you don't have a development plan or at least a concept plan, but I think Mark and Shannon would agree that, you know, part of the planning process, it really should be done this way more than it is, is to start with the regulation without the development plan and establish those parameters, allow the commission to retain all of its legislative discretion, and go from there. So, I think we're being sort of, perhaps overly compliant with the good planning process and following the P O C D here, and that's what we've been trying to do.
Thanks. Tim, I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask a clar, Tim, can you clarify? Because I know I've, I've been doing this for fifteen years, and this thing still bugs the heck out of me. Actually, twenty years, holy moly. So, anyway, with respect to the condition for the site plan, I know, I understand per the statute, we can't do that, and I know you and I exchanged a few emails on this. It, am I correct that as, so, this commission typically opens and closes a hearing in one night? It doesn't necessarily have to happen that way. We could open a hearing, there could be dialogue with the applicant that would suggest perhaps modifications be made, and then at the applicant's discretion, they could choose to hold open the hearing with the commission's concurrence, modifications be made, and they come back at the next hearing, at the next meeting, so that, there's not conditions per se, but those modifications are getting incorporated in, and there's a consensus. Is that fair to phrase it in that fashion?
Yes, and you hit the nail on the head. What you can do, and what you should do, is if a plan does not comply with the regulations, you impose a condition, really a request to change the site plan to make sure it does comply with your conditions. What you can't do at a site plan is say, okay, we're going to approve this, but we want you to move the wall over there six feet into the side yard, so that you're, you know, creating a violation of your neighbor's set back. You can't impose a condition that creates a violation. You can't impose a condition that create, that makes sure that your regulations are being complied with. Does that make sense?
Perfect. Thank you. I think that's helpful. Thank you.
I'm good. Scott?
Madam Chair, actually, I know I don't have a vote on this, but I'd like to recuse myself from discussion or questions.
Thank you. John Bevort?
Thank you. No questions.
Keith Bevort?
No, I just was going to reiterate, you know, it seems like Mark said that the P O C D is better represented with this than what was there before. So, I know that there's question about what's going to come to follow this, but, you know, I would think better is what we're striving for. So, you know, we can take up any other issues when they come up, and, I mean, this seems like a good idea to me.
Thank you. This is a public hearing, so at this point, I would open up the application to anyone who would like to speak either in favor or in opposition of this application. You must come forward, identify yourself with your name and address, please.
Madam Chair, this is Matt Pogson. I would like to ask one more question. I know, I was trying to, I didn't want to cut you off in the middle of your sentence, but would you mind if I ask one more question?
Go ahead.
Thank you. There's another change that allows for a four-story tall building in this application. Is that something, it's a forty-five-foot height, which allows for four stories. Other than Yukon, and I think the most recent surgical center, which might have been forty-three feet or something like that, are there other structures in this area that have reached that height? Or is this something that would be a new, a new change to this area?
No, the height's consistent for this medical office area. So, the M O R F zone has, building height shall not exceed forty-four feet, provided that forty-six feet shall be allowed if the building includes a surgical center. I believe the M O C zone has the exact same wording, forty-four feet with a forty-six-foot max with a surgical center. And the midpoint development zone that was just approved six, seven months ago was similar, similar wording, obviously not for a surgical center, but it had to do with rooftop units being enclosed, allowed, I think, forty-five or forty-six feet, something to that effect. So, it's not out of the ordinary.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification.
Certainly not, yeah, certainly not in this corridor. Again, you know, there are areas, you know, in the middle of Route Four, you know, where Town Hall is, no, it's not appropriate, but in these, you know, this area, it's perhaps a little more appropriate.
I appreciate the clarification. Thank you very much.
Yep, thank you. We'll go back to the public hearing portion of this and ask anyone from the public who would like to come forward and identify themselves with a name and address and present your question.
So, we have, we do have one attendee showing. You would have to unmute yourself in order to speak if you wish to speak. I'm not seeing any hands.
No hands up?
You can raise your hands, too, if you're having difficulty muting. These are all our folks. There's nothing here, and there's nothing in the chat.
Hearing none, I would go back to the applicant and ask them if they'd like to make any closing statements before I close the hearing.
This is Tim Hollister. And no, Madam Chair, the questions were very pointed and thorough, and just to review my notes, didn't, I don't think we left anything out, so we thank you.
Nothing to add.
Nothing to add, and I just will, I will say one thing. The questions about the various provisions in the two-column about the various provisions, in the two-column document, the specific purpose of that was to show you where else in the town regulations, uh, a similar or identical standard is found. That, that's the whole purpose of that document, is to say, you know, is this, does this have a precedent elsewhere? So that was, that was what we were trying to do with that document.
Madam Chair, if I may, uh, I spoke very briefly at the commencement of this hearing, and I, I just want to reiterate that.
Chris, oh, okay.
Um, there are a couple of, I think, really salient points, that you maintain a safe harbor as a commission by having the, exercising your broad legislative discretion on where this zone would land. You have really the ultimate authority. So, uh, I think that's a very important concept. It's also noteworthy that you, by contemplating this amendment, are being proactive. Staff has worked incredibly hard to, to further the development of this zone, and we complied. We've done everything we can, and everything that staff asked of us, as far as I know. I don't think there were any complaints about our efforts to bolster this. So we've done that, knowing that we're looking forward, and we're being proactive, and we're not stagnating in an area. We're developing and moving forward. So, the final thing I want to say is, these standards are more restrictive than what exists. So I'm just not sure of any downside from, when I look at the cost benefit, there's just positive, and it's what the town has asked of us. So, I don't have anything else. Attorney Hollister, do you have anything? Any of the, uh, Metro folks want to be heard?
No.
Okay. Madam Chair, thank you, members.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
With that, I will close this public hearing. We'll go back to, um, an action on that public hearing, the Metro Realty Group, um, for the application for text amendment to the special innovation floating zone. Uh, we need a motion and a second to start the conversation, please.
Uh, yeah, Patrick Carrier. I make a motion to, to approve the text amendment to the special innovation floating zone.
I need a second, please.
Mike Grubel, a second.
We have a motion and a second. Look for comment. Patrick?
Uh, no, I mean, I say thank you to, um, Mr. Sager and his team for, um, doing the work behind the scenes, and to town staff, which obviously we look to for guidance. No, I think this is great to, you know, the clarify, the clarification is great.
Mike Grubelis?
No, just agree with what Patrick said. I, I do think that, you know, the language in here matches up to, uh, existing amendments that we've made recently in the past few years. Um, and, uh, I think it's good to have some clear guidance on, on what we're looking for here, as well as, uh, lining up with the P O C D.
Great, thank you. Matt?
I think, uh, we have had a discussion about clarification tonight, making sure that things are quantified, uh, clearly, and sometimes doing that is helpful, and sometimes doing that, I think, can be a hindrance. Um, we're often, we're often shown that our P O C D specifically says that this area should be developed this way. We are, refer to that on a regular basis. In fact, uh, typically, when we start these meetings with Metro, um, we are, um, we are reminded that our P O C D says these specific things, because if we were to deviate from that, we would be met with litigation. And when we look at clarifying and, and quantifying these items specifically to height or coverage, and then we are met with an application that meets this new quantification, then we have very little to possibly, uh, you know, use our, um, what's that that Chris always says? We have the, uh, um.
Discretion?
We got legislative, uh, approval or whatnot. Um, but the reality is that the way that it currently is, although it's vague, would give us the ability to say that something doesn't fit into the character of an area. It would give us the ability to say that something doesn't fit. Um, and I'm looking at a very green area, again, off to the left of this yellow outlined area that abuts some, uh, very high-end residential areas, who are not gonna be happy about a four-story building going in next to them. But if we tonight agree to a 45-foot, uh, foot height regulation and 75% coverage, regardless of if that's the intention or not, it would be very difficult as a commission to, uh, not allow that, because our regulation allows it. So, uh, in court, that would probably not hold up. So, reading between lines tonight and trying to understand what Metro's overall goal is, uh, leads me to believe that clarification, in this case, would be helpful to the development of what they're doing. Um, otherwise, they wouldn't spend the time or money to be here tonight. So, I have a lot of reservation about this, um, and I am concerned about what it will lead to, specifically in that small section, uh, but in other areas alongside some of the other developments, uh, with some more residential areas. So, um, those are my concerns, and that's what I'm thinking tonight, and, uh, I don't know where I stand at this time. Thank you. That's all.
Thank you. Inez?
Thank you to the town staff for all of your time, um, working with all the parties involved. Um, I still have, you know, if, if this regulation exists and there is a project, I'm surprised nothing has been put forward, if there are all these loopholes. I am still wondering what is coming our way. Um, yeah, that, that, that's all I have. I don't have any other comments or questions.
Marcy?
Sorry. Thank you, Barbara. Um, I, I'm just curious, are we required to vote tonight and make a decision on this tonight? Or is there a possibility?
The reality is, you're not required to. Um, if the commission were to feel that they're not ready to vote, you need to, uh, communicate that, and we can postpone the voting to the next meeting, if that's your desire. I did not hear that from, I heard it a little bit from Matt.
We have also closed the hearing at this point, so no additional information can be provided from the applicant, or staff, or anyone, so.
You have to dwell on what you've been given, if you decide to postpone the vote to the next meeting. You're allowed to do that, but we can't, we've done this before, and we've made it clear, you're not to communicate to each other, you're not to communicate to me, or to staff. You, you go on what you've heard, the hearing's been closed, there's no additional information that can be afforded.
I am with you, Marcy. I, uh, this is Inez St. James. Um, I, I would like to take more time.
I would just like to.
Anyone else?
Mark carefully.
Anyone else?
I have a question for Shannon or the staff, if that's possible.
Who am I, who's talking?
This is Keith.
Okay, Keith.
So, uh, during the presentation, Chris Hoeve had said, um, that this new proposal is actually more restrictive than what's currently on the books. Do you guys agree with that?
In my opinion, yes.
Yes.
Okay. So, I, I mean, I, as I said before, I, the fact that it said that the P O C D is better represented with this than without it, that's something that Mark had said in the presentation. I think this makes sense for us to do, and I don't have a vote as an alternate, but I would be against postponing the vote. That's just my opinion on it.
Okay. Patrick, are you committed to voting tonight?
Uh, yes, I am. I actually, I agree with Keith.
Um, Mike?
Agreed. I'm, I'm all set to vote.
Matt?
I probably would like more time, but I could vote tonight.
Inez?
I would like more time.
Marcy?
I would like more time.
I think we. I, I think there's four of us that would like to vote tonight, and two that.
But I think.
What do you think?
I think if more time is needed in order to make the decision.
By anyone.
By forcing the vote, I don't know that it's a productive use of anyone's time. So to force a vote tonight, when two of the members aren't ready to vote, I don't know is helpful.
Who makes the final decision? Do they have to vote to not?
There's a motion on the floor.
Connecticut general statute.
No. There's a motion on the floor, so if the, if it's the desire of the commission to postpone the vote, the motion would have to be withdrawn, and a new motion would have to be made to postpone the decision. They have 65 days to render a decision after the public hearing closes.
All right, so the original motion maker has to withdraw the emotion, and the second has to do the same?
If they choose.
Okay, yeah. I'm, I'm, I don't want to force the vote, so yes, I would, um, withdraw my original motion.
Then might be withdrawing a second.
Uh, yeah, I'm, I will. I, uh, I'm, uh, I'm a little confused, but that's fine. I'll withdraw my second.
And let's, let's think about where we're going with this, understanding that we have one more meeting, uh, two more meetings left. So even though they have a long period of time that we could install as a waiting period for a vote, um, they would lose August completely, because we don't meet in August.
Well, the 65 days, I don't think the 65 days is gonna get us to September. So they've got to vote at one of the two meetings in July.
Yeah. So it, we should have a motion now to delay a vote with a specific day attached to it, no later than?
I think you just leave it no later than the 65 days, and staff will keep track.
Well, we don't meet in that 65 days.
It doesn't matter. We'll keep track of it. That's what we do. So just delay the vote, and it'll be on the agenda for the next.
All right. Does everybody understand what we're, what we're talking about?
We need a motion.
We're gonna, we're gonna ask for a motion to delay the vote, and it will be, the same item will be on the next meeting's agenda.
Correct. And it'll be on as old business, and there'll be no public hearing, right? So we're back to.
The public hearing has been closed.
So only information that's been provided to you, the meeting minutes that Sandy emails to you, no dialogue with each other, with anyone regarding this. I don't care if it's a picnic or a shopping center.
Yep.
There's no dialogue regarding it until you have the meeting in July.
May I have a motion, please?
This is Inez St. James. I make the motion to delay the vote on the application for text amendment, amendments to the special innovation floating zone, no later than 65 days.
May I have a second?
This is Marcy Schwartz, and I second.
All right, there is a motion and a second to delay the vote. May I have, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention. What, I'm sorry, was that, did it, was that a dog? I think it's just.
It's my dog, sorry.
No abstention? Okay, so that motion carries.
Correct. So it'll return to the agenda at the next meeting.
As old buil- as old business.
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you.
Let's move on to planner's report.
Um, I have, I have nothing for you this evening, except to say my final goodbye.
And, and since he has no planner's report, I'm gonna make a planner's report, and that is that it is Mark's last meeting with us in Farmington. Um, and we, as a commission, I believe, we all wish him well in his next endeavor.
Thank you.
Thank you for your service and your hard work.
Thank you, Barbara.
And, uh, we hope things go well.
Much appreciated.
Thank you.
It's been a wonderful experience serving with you folks, and, uh, I, I hope that I'd left you just a little bit better. Uh, I, I hope that that's the case, and, uh, definitely enjoyed my stay with you.
Thank you. Now we'll go to minutes. We need a motion to approve the minutes for the June 8th meeting.
This is Matt Pogston. I move to approve the meeting, uh, minutes for June 8th.
May I have a second?
Inez St. James, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Uh, with that, you are adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Thanks for everything, Mark.
You're welcome. Have a good, have a good evening.